Okay, so we can call the meeting to order and is there anything emergent to add to the agenda? If not, could I have somebody move the agenda for adoption? Jim? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then first item on the agenda is accounts payable through December thirteenth for information. Larry? Moves for information, any questions or concerns?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, E F T four two two one? Um, my question is, do, are we, like, is it all the pickups and stuff like that we're sending out for oil changes and stuff?
No, just when the shop is over busy.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just looked at that and I'm like, well, I thought we had two mechanics. And that's just a pretty big price tag, in my opinion, for three oil changes, so. Which is, I thought, something that we could be doing.
No, actually, that's a really good price for three oil changes.
And an inspection.
Okay, that's, that was just my question, was if we're doing ours at all, or if we're sending them out, just because I'm looking at manpower, man time and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, when we, the mechanics have time, we do, do them in-house.
Okay.
And did you, and I guess, without knowing what all those numbers are, those might not be pickups. They might be, I don't know. Like, I know unit one twenty is engine one. Unit one thirty-nine is rusty three, so I don't know what numbers correlate to what. I'd have to go into the budget, but those could be trucks.
But going to Napa?
Yeah, I suppose. A good, good point.
Okay.
I've never heard you say that.
Eighty-five, seven ninety-eight. Uh, the movie in the park for Red Cliff days, is that for next year, or is they just billing late?
That's a late bill from August of twenty twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, for information, opposed, that is carried. And then cash and investment summary to the end of December. Somebody want to move for information? What's his name? James? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the budget versus actual year-to-date summary for information. Chris? Any questions or concerns? James?
Maybe I just don't know what I'm looking at here, but twenty-four dash zero two disaster and emergency services. The budget net total at the bottom here says seventy-one thousand, four seventy-four. Year-to-date, two hundred and forty, one thousand, two hundred and eighty. Looking at those two numbers side by side, looks like we missed the mark pretty big, but maybe I just don't know what I'm reading.
So, we, um, got most funding that was put into there. Um, and so we had the expenses of that, so we had our most projects that came out of that account.
And actually, that's a good thing, James. We only went backward seventy-one versus a budgeted two forty-one. Right? There was no income budgeted, if you look up at the top.
Okay.
Or sorry, no, there was budgeted and we didn't get it, that's what happened, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm reading it wrong, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Done?
Yep, done.
Okay, sorry, Chris?
Can you just speak to the police services budget a little bit? Uh, like, James's point, it seems like it's out of whack a bit.
Which number was that, Chris?
Uh, two, one, zero, zero. Page?
Yeah.
You should be able to find it, they're, they're in order. Yep.
So that went the other way?
Nope, same thing.
Services. So, uh, the budget amount was one point three total, and our actual costs were eight hundred and thirty. So we were under budget four hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Why was that? And can we put that towards our RCMP issue?
Uh, we could still be waiting on an RCMP bill.
Yeah, that seems like a lot to just, oh, we overbudgeted five hundred thousand dollars.
We could still be waiting for a bill to go there.
So that's maybe not quite up to date and accurate then?
Yeah.
And then I guess another question I should ask Mike maybe to explain is, the amortization is shown on all of these and yet we don't truly account for it, so it skews all our numbers, right? To a point?
Yeah, so we budget for them, but we budget the deficit for it. And none of those have been put in yet, we do those, it's a, that's a year-end thing.
These numbers are not year-end final.
No, these are preliminary before all the adjustments and year-end stuff has happened, so you'll, at the very end of this, you'll see, uh, like, government transfers, a lot of that's our debentures that get paid out through the year, they just go into like one account, and then they get distributed to all of the different accounts, uh, later on.
Like even this one, the three forty-four government grant, is not shown as coming in yet, right?
No, and we received this one, um, right around year-end, so it, it should have shown up. I'm not sure why it did, but we did receive that money.
Posted different than a day, it wouldn't show up, so. But like I say, these, like, if you look, there's a whole bunch of these where there's amortization, they show up as an expense, but it's not there, and, and it does skew all the numbers, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving for information, opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on to minutes, we have the council minutes held January tenth, twenty twenty-two.
For adoption?
Kathy? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the municipal planning commission held January nineteenth. Larry? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the town of Red Cliff library board meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Jim? Any questions or concerns there? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to bylaws, we have land use bylaw amendment application for lot thirty, block sixty-seven, plan nine-three-one, three-three-one-eight, specifically number eight, Fourth Street, Southwest, for first reading. Larry? Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, James.
I looked up that address on Google, and there's already a house there, so with what my read is the description of Horticultural District, is that why it's just getting rezoned, is because?
Yeah, like in the MPC minutes, it says that she's wishing to put up a mother-in-law suite or whatever, well, that's not allowed under Horticultural, but it would be allowed in R one. And, and then MPC talked about, truly, if you looked at all five of those houses, and it probably would be good, but somebody would literally have to talk to everybody. So then that's why it's recommended that we start this process and
See where it goes.
See where it goes, or else we could, as a council, we could change all of it and see what happens then.
You don't need to go out of your way to help her, do you?
It might not be helping, or not if everybody else comes in and doesn't want it, right, so.
That's okay.
Anyway, like, that's, this is here this way.
Yeah, so now, if we go forward with this, and then people come in and they dispute it, then that's when?
Well, the neighbors, I suppose, could complain, this will be advertised, and yeah, there'll have to be a public hearing after thirty days of advertising, so yeah, people could come in and not want the zoning change. They would have to have pretty good reasons, I suppose, but, yeah, it's an open process. Larry did this, right?
First reading?
Yes. I didn't read it. Okay, anybody else have any questions, concerns?
We just do them the one reading today?
Just one reading, and then it's got to be advertised, and then there's got to be a public hearing, and then two readings after that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then requests for decision. Red Cliff rectangle ice rental rates review for consideration. Matt? Any particular thing? You're just agreeing?
Um, shoot, I'm trying to find it here.
It's on the screen.
Well, it's not, not where I'm, uh... Yeah, it was, uh, for option one, or, yeah, option one, I guess.
Okay.
I think that'd be better than going and doing it in May, in my opinion.
Especially because somebody rented it out already. Anyway.
Well, we could just honor that rate.
It's all good.
But, yeah, I think September's fine.
I was surprised to see urban up there.
Yeah.
Because they used to be very economical.
Brooks and Medicine Hat kind of makes sense, but urban, I'm a little shocked.
I see why everybody's flocking to Tabor.
I don't even know boiling hot one.
Yeah, they do.
Yep.
I see that now.
The last time I was there, it was very cold, I thought it was still natural ice, but I think they do, it isn't natural ice anymore, right?
No, that's artificial ice.
Okay. Anyway. So Matt made a motion for option number one.
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I can't find it anymore.
Well, ask.
I don't know what it was. I, I think it might have been about the sport court, I was gonna, because I noticed how low the sport court was compared to everything else, and I thought to myself, well, no, that should be higher because of the cost of the court itself, I know it wasn't very cheap, but I'm sure in comparison to the cost of making ice and maintenance of all that equipment, that sport court was fairly cheap, actually, so the price is probably reflective appropriately. Then that might have been my question, and I answered it myself, and I don't remember thinking any more.
So smart, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah. And it's not going in this summer, right?
We're keeping ice all summer?
Yes, there's a group that wants to contract ice all summer, yes.
Oh, who's that?
I'm just the mayor.
James, who's that?
I just found out.
What about Ball Hockey League, exactly? Do they know?
Ball Hockey League had not confirmed that they wanted it, and we did have a opportunity to rent it, and I believe Shannon actually had that in the manager's report last meeting.
No.
She did.
I think she did, yeah. Now that you mention it, it rings a bell.
Yeah. It was in there. Because that's why I asked about these rates and all this, plus the fact that we were doing them.
Well, that's brought this topic up last time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus, we were doing, thinking of doing millions of dollars worth of renovations, so it was like... And how do you study it when it's ice all year? Like, how do you get people in there, but whatever, just Dwight. Anyway, anyway, option number one, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Family school liaison worker, funding review for consideration.
I was a little shocked.
This was another Dwight question, and I'm glad they had to travel all over Alberta to find somebody that still did it. Somebody want to receive that information, consideration? Chris?
Receive for information?
Well, which one are you doing?
I think if you, information will just keep it the same as it always was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Chris for information?
And what was your concerns with it again, then?
Well, my concerns were, um, we've always done this, back, right back from the day when it was just a single person named Elaine Terry, and, uh, we funded it through FCSS. And then what happened is all schools started thinking this was a good idea, and, and, uh, so they were all going to their municipalities to get funding, and then the school board started thinking that that was a, kind of a pain to go to the town, so they actually lobbied the government that they start being able to get their money directly from the government. So when the government did that, then a lot of municipalities dropped it from the FCSS because they had, they were going around them, getting provincial funding. And, uh, this happened a few years ago, and yet we still do it. And even the Dreams thing, like, the Dreams was another government funding thing that kind of came through, and like Prairie Rose actually lost that because of some, possibly using it for things that weren't allowed, you know, like sometime, like, there's a list of what you can use your funds for, and so it was almost like they were funding the same revenue stream from different sources, and, and then that had to change, and, and even with us, we're funding something that they can actually apply to the provincial government for, and they do, because I think Prairie Rose has five? They were up to about five counselors at one time. And other, like Medicine Hats dropped dead, lots of places have not done it anymore, and that's why I brought it up, is because if we didn't give it to them, we could be doing other projects with that money, because we're only allocated a certain amount, and we match it twenty percent, but...
And it costs us, what, four thousand eight hundred a year?
Right, that is, that is Red Cliff taxpayers' cost of the twenty percent of the total. So, I asked that they look into what other groups are doing, and like, yes, some still are, and well, some even fund their own counselors, which is almost what we started doing at the beginning of this, but, anyway, the, the recommendation is to keep doing it the same till they come up with a different plan.
Yeah.
But it's just, yeah, like, if we're always looking for different things to fund, then we should be looking at what we're already funding too, if we still have to, you know?
Yeah, that's fair.
And I guess the other thing with this was, uh, you know, we have the joint school use, that's almost like a one-way street as well, whereas they come to the swimming pool, they come to the arena, and we help fund things, and because of COVID, because it's easy for the last two years, we don't get to use school facilities. That was maybe my burp.
Yes, well, you're absolutely right with that.
And, and I, I find it's hard, uh, you know, there, anyway.
But on this topic, I think this is still relevant.
Well, and they're still, and our staff is still saying it's a good deal too, and I'm not saying that, uh, the idea is bad, it's just they actually can get their funding from the province. We could, if we had a good use, we could be using that money someplace else, but it is what it is.
And Chris moved it for info. Any other? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Pitch in week for consideration.
I'll move option one.
All right. Any questions or concerns?
Seeing, are we going to set out any bins for yard cleanup? For that period of time? Did we do that last year? We did not? So we've never done that?
I think we done it until up to last year.
Oh. Well, I know we had always free dumping, and then some people were saying that if you don't have a truck, how could you get to free dumping, but
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, there, there has been a bin, I know there has been a bin, but when it stopped, I'm not too sure.
Well, with the recycling depot, we could put a bin out there. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, but he's saying put some bins out there that people could put their one...
Sorry, Chris, I, I thought you were...
Just temporary, yeah.
Do their yard cleanups.
Believe me, people probably will.
Maybe some people might clean up their yards.
Yeah. I got an old refrigerator in my yard that's...
Okay, enough said.
Careful, Dwight's gonna come take a photo of him.
Okay, any other comments or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the sanitary sewer master plan for consideration. Larry, move option one? Any questions or concerns?
Um, I guess, if, if option one is the direction that we're going, is it possible to maybe talk about, like, getting a, like, a contracted agreement in place with the city where this is the rate, because that discussion that can be had where we pay X amount per cubic meter, or however they bill us for the next, like, almost like a lease for the next twenty years, this is the rate for...
That is our goal for a long-term standing rate, yes.
That's kind of how I thought it was going, but I just wanted...
How long was the previous agreement for?
The previous agreement is in place until somebody makes any recommended changes, and so we want to be, make sure that we are doing our due diligence before we open any agreements. Right now, that was a struggle, and it was put in place after much difficulty, and, uh, we want to make sure that we're doing the best for our citizens.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And moving on to policy number zero-zero-eight, water meter and backflow preventer policy for consideration.
Number one?
Jim? Number one? We lost.
It's on the screen.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's up there. Okay, any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the municipality of Crowesness Pass, read the college and association of registered nurses.
For information.
Kathy for information? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the municipality of Crowesness Pass, read the college of physicians and surgeons for information. Chris? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the town of Tofield, adolescent vaccine provision for information. James? For info? Any questions or concerns?
I love how the second paragraph started on that one.
All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on to other, we have notification of Northside area structure plan and functional serving, servicing report request for proposal for information.
Save for information.
Kathy? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the facility assessment report for information. Matt?
Oh, Matt?
Any questions or concerns?
Hold on, it's still loading? That's six hundred and fifty page document.
Kathy?
Well, when I read this, I I saw a lot of red, and it kind of scared me. Is administration going to come up with any plan for council to look at some major repairs, replacements of some of these facilities?
Yes, ma'am, the, the document in itself is, is a planning tool for us to use when we look at your long-term five, ten, fifteen-year capital plan. So we'll take this information, um, summarize it, and use it when we do our, our long-term planning. So we can lay out for you what, what should be done first, and, and when we might have to do other stuff, so we can do some proper fiscal planning as well.
Okay, because especially in the case of the museum.
I was, I was gonna bring that up.
Like, that's where, that's where our history sits. And for a building to be in very poor condition like that, that's, I think we're kind of at risk of losing some stuff that's in there.
Yeah, it, it...
It's kind of scary.
It is kind of scary, but there's a lot of things that council will have to take into consideration, uh, with the, the museum itself. And so right now, we are in the very basics of this report, and though the museum is a, a critical piece of infrastructure, there's a lot of tough questions for council to have to answer.
For sure. Thank you.
Go ahead, James.
Um, well, I noticed, to touch on what you were saying, Kathy, some of that red stuff we already had allotted for this year, but um, I guess one of the questions is, is administration going to look at, um, whether or not we need to amend the budget to include some of these other things that are deemed immediate action? Before we finalize the budget in March or April?
Yes, sir, if there's anything that you need to do that we haven't addressed. But I offer you a word of caution. Some things that might be immediate really are within a five-year time, timeframe.
Oh, I a hundred percent agree.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, I guess my question going back to the museum is, looking at that, like, looking at the pictures and stuff, what are we looking at for a timeframe, like, where something needs, like, obviously it needs to be done, like, very, very soon, but like, what are we looking at for a timeframe? That's, that's my question, is because, like, looking at those pictures, like, my gosh, I couldn't believe it.
So, in words that were given to me earlier, um, it could move a sixteenth of an inch every year, or it could decide to go.
That crack we're talking about?
Yeah, the movement of that north wall could happen at any time, we don't know that. Then you need to look at the historic value of that building, uh, it was one of our first buildings.
The south building was.
The south building was, yes. And then you need to determine where you could put a museum, and what it would cost to build a new museum, and the environmental uh, controls that would have to be put into a new museum. There's a lot of really tough questions that we need to, to come to council with, and one of them is, um, unfortunately, what is the value of the museum? And, and not in a dollar sense, but in a community sense.
And in a dollar sense.
And in dollar sense, but, but, but you could, could have people go, was the value of having a museum? What is the, the environmental, or the social, or the cultural impact of continuing that museum when so many things are going online? And if you look at building a new museum, and you have to look at how you have to put the controls in place for paper, and dehumidification, and all the other things that have to be looked at, and then you look at, is there a building in town we could move the museum to? So there's all those things that are rattling around in our heads that we have yet to put on paper for your heads.
Yes.
That museum has been like that since I came here in the seventies, it hasn't changed much, except that the police aren't there anymore, and the utility people aren't there anymore, I, I think it kind of adds to the ambiance of the museum.
And I'm sure that, that, um...
And he's not Dutch, so he can't hold up that wall.
That we, there, there are ways to repair, but we don't know what those ways are, we don't know if we can, what the engineering would cost, we don't know what it would cost to repair, and those are all things that we need to be able to present to council before we ask you to make a decision.
We could just run a big poll to the adjacent building right north of it. Wedge it in there, and that would hold the wall up.
Out of gold, Chris.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think what, uh, what we have to read with caution, and I find this a bit frustrating when I was reading it, is, at Shortgrass, we had the same thing done, we had engineers come in and, and go through the facility and, and do up a report like this. And of course, that's a thirty-year-old building, and if anybody has walked through the Shortgrass building, it's, you, it looks like a brand-new building. But they had the same things, oh, you know, all your electrical needs redoing, and, and your fire annunciation panel is all out of date, and your mechanical units have reached the end of their life, and the boiler's toast, and, and it's on and on and on, except being in the HVAC business, I know there are boilers in Medicine Hat that are probably eighty years old, and I'm not saying that they should still be there, but they're still there. And there's old electrical panels, much older than forty years old, and they're still there. That doesn't mean you don't look at them, it doesn't mean you don't do this study, so you can actually get some... That doesn't mean you don't look at them, it doesn't mean you don't do this study, so you can actually get some long-range planning in place. But when you look at, let's hit the red, first of all, the aqua, the aquatic center barely made fair, that building was built in nineteen ninety and. Because it's only half my age, I don't think it's that old yet, right, now I realize, some ten-year-old might think it's humongously old. James might think it's old, that's your age. Now, when you look at that building, is it because there's some cracks here and there and roof needs re-roofing and all that? They've got some high prices there, and they're rating it as poor, or fair, sorry. I, I honestly, we're even doing renovations in it right now and adding to it, I don't know if I'd rate that as just fair, I think that building's in reasonable shape. When you start into the poor, well, your seniors drop-in center is poor. But we know we've already upgraded the kitchen and all that, and yes, it may not have the best insulation in the world because it's a brick building.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean it's hazardous or.
No, it, it's functional, very functional.
They, they explained very clearly in their ratings, it's based on the cost of the value of the building, so at eleven percent. Cost of the building, they're rating it as in poor shape, if it needs that kind of stuff, so when you look at all those town hall, this is poor. I don't think this is a threat, and we've done many upgrades in here, and they even knew about some of them, but, you know, same thing, and every one of them. Okay, we need to hire a summer student to paint all our gas lines, but we don't, because it's code that you should paint them now, but.
It's grand.
Obviously twenty years ago, you didn't have to paint them and they're not, that doesn't mean it's dangerous. It just means don't go cutting black pipe if you don't know what's inside it. And, and like I say, just about all of our buildings, as soon as they hit the forty, thirty-five to forty years old, they all talk like they need new electrical. Something like the arena might need some new electrical panels, but that doesn't mean all of them do, unless they've outgrown it, we've talked about. Our Public Works Building, so we know some of these things, but they're all rated as poor, so when you look at them, you go, holy heck, that's bad, but. None of those, I, in my opinion, even if some of those buildings are due for maintenance, it, I don't know if I would rank them quite as sternly as they are. But that's their ranking, and this is how we work. When you, like I can't see how the fire hall just made poor. When, when the town hall made poor. There, when you walk through the two buildings, I think you'd notice subtle differences.
The fire hall is way nicer than town hall.
What I couldn't figure out is how can the fire, how can the smoke detector in the fire hall be expired? Isn't that first thing you guys check?
Well, we actually have, we probably don't keep the old ones up to date anymore because we have security, right? So it's monitored, so if we have old smoke detectors, we don't care anymore, it's as long as the one that's hooked up to the monitoring system is good. But you know, it could be reaching ten years old too. Due for an inspection, I'm thinking, I mean, anyway, like I say, that, this is here and it's to be read and acknowledged. And then from there, we formulate a plan going forward, that's, but this is a document that will live with us for a few years. And even the critical one, it's hard to say. You know, it's only been there, well, the south has been there since nineteen twelve. The north, I really don't know, that was probably added on in the thirties, only Larry would know, and. And then the, the. East addition was done in the nineties and that lean too, so. Anyway.
I just need to see something happen in that building, is it, there is a lot, like that's history in there that we've never get back, right, so, that's just my opinion.
Archaeologists would find it.
They need something to do.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried, and the Jasmine Lift Station Project Update for information.
Oh man, there's a lot of houses, I'll give the, I'll, I'll give it to Kathy.
Sure.
Ladies first, were you happy to read this one, Chris?
It came in under budget.
Yeah.
Don't jinx it?
Woo-hoo, text message.
Nope, we gotta call, Bert, call Bert.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, you said not yet, is there something else to come in with this project, I, did I miss something?
It gives us a little envelope if something is delayed.
Oh, okay. Okay, but we totally expect it to be that forty-four thousand dollar mark.
Within that, yes.
Okay, good. One wet-will wizard coming.
That includes like installation commissioning, up and running, ready to go.
Dropped off at town hall.
Put it in the back of Chris's truck.
Drive it over, oh, I'll be the hero of the neighborhood. Where do you leave Bert?
Oh, my daughter-in-law's at the house wrapping sausage and Bert is all excited, he thinks that somebody's breaking in. I got good neighbors.
Okay, all in favor of? Bert. Opposed, that is carried, and then moving on to project updates. Most of these are brand-new and just started.
Yeah.
Yes, I have not even got all the, the detailed timelines in.
I'll move for information.
Uh, did James, anybody have any questions on any of those? Do any of them clean up some of the deficiencies in the facility management book?
Some of them do, I think they're related.
I have one question, cause I've seen this on here a few times, and I keep needing to ask it, the South Highway Drainage Project, what is that?
So when, if I'm in the right place, Chris, if I'm in the right place. It's what happens down by truckers, um, in behind truckers, there's a, a, a slough. Well, it's not a slough, it's a stormwater pond, and it's always got water in it, and it never seems to go away, it's been an ongoing thing. Our concerns are that we need to, to work with Alberta Transportation because of the, the area there.
Yeah, it's filling up with silt too, it needs to be.
Well, that'll mean it'll slowly disappear.
Yeah, it'll be, pretty soon it'll be level.
Like on the north side of the tracks?
No, it's the, it's the one at the very bottom as you're going up over the overpass, and then I think there's a culvert that takes it out. Underneath the CPR right away, and then it slowly flows, like if it gets high enough, it flows, but the rest of the year, it sits there as.
Stagnant water line.
Pond.
So it's that one when you're going over the overpass, you look right.
Right, yeah, it's the first one and then the second, yeah.
Cause I'm sitting there trying to picture behind truck or something.
Water will flow through it into the ditch through a culvert, and then it does eventually flow down.
It's pretty much beside, there, yeah.
Why is that our concern, that's not our land?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
We annexed, right, that's a part of it.
Okay.
Samrow Annexation years ago.
Okay, so it's like King and the Road, part of Redcliffe?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, that, that whole piece is Redcliffe, that finger, between Samus Drive and the highway, yeah. Because Medicine Hat wouldn't service it, that would be a leapfrogging, so they asked if they could join Redcliffe, cause we could give them services.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, slough is called a wetland.
But it is a wetland now, many, many ducks have done bad things there. That actually is half the size that it used to be.
Yeah.
Because.
Well, there was some dirt pushed in.
Big Eagle actually asked to fill that, and they hauled in.
From their bag trucks?
Well, no, no, they, I don't even know where they found all the fill for in there. But it's still, I, I don't know, as far as working out the. If they wanna look into it, they look into it. Okay, any other questions on any of the projects? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. And, uh, is there anything? Nothing in, we didn't put anything in closed. So, this is the only thing that's not on the agenda, and that's because. Jim decided to get sick and fiddle fart around and not come to council meetings, and then Dwight decided to get sick and fiddle fart around and not count to council meeting. So, after four months of keeping this thing dust-free, Jim. Oh, I would like to present you, oh, look, let's go in the middle, put your, put your masky on, me too. Yeah, you're right.
You got fingerprints on it.
I can see why Ryder gets frustrated.
What's wrong with Ryder?
You took the long way there, Jim.
What's wrong with Ryder, Jim?
Paid by the hour? Paid by the hour?
Yeah.
Jim, what's wrong with Ryder?
Uh, same, just problem we had.
So Jim, to present to you a distinguished service award for your twenty-three years of council from the Alberta Municipalities. Strength and number, they've changed their name, and we'll present you with this, it was given to me in October, thank you very much, and.
Thank you.
Can you guys look at Shannon?
Oh, okay.
Should I get out of the picture, or is this okay?
Did you get it? No, my goodness.
Big grin on his face.
I'm not helping though. For the record, I never moved at all, you guys just stood right there. Congratulations, Jim.
Did you at least get one picture with Chris in it? Okay.
Put that one on the Facebook page.
Yeah, picture bombed by Chris.
Chris dreaming of his twenty years of service.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris wanting to be like Jim.
Another sixteen to twenty years and you too can have one. By then, who knows what they'll be made out of.
Probably a hologram.
They'll just beam it to you, okay, alright, that's it, that's, oh, important dates, right? Yeah, important dates, Larry? What's up, Shannon? Oh, okay. Anybody got any questions on those or an important date to add?
That, uh.
That stated the address to the city, is that Samus Hall's supposed to be attending?
Uh, Dwight and I have.
Uh, Dwight isn't.
Kathy and I will be attending. You will be deputy mayor at that time? So, yes, please contact me for.
It's a lunch meeting.
I just saw a price tag on it, and like, are we required to spend the fifty bucks to go?
Well, in past years, actually, we've usually only had, um, one ticket, cause I was always getting mine bought free by another organization, which. Saved us money, right, but they haven't offered this year, so.
As for the state of the city?
Yeah. We usually go, it does. Like, it's only for looks, I suppose, but, and to here, they usually try to bring up something and their strategic planning. They're going to, uh, they probably will have finished by then, so then, you know, they're, usually they talk about what is coming up in the year and. And what they do does affect us, so.
That was just my thought, just because of the price tag to go, so.
Yeah, usually we've only bought like one or two tickets. Go ahead, Larry.
Uh, you can do like me and pay your own and go.
Yeah, Larry and Joanne do show up from time to time.
All the time, we just pay our own.
Yeah, they sit in the back and rumble.
Heckle.
No, cause the Redcliffe Mayor is sometimes further back than Larry.
Closer to the door.
You don't get, I've never had a front-center seat, no way, it's way in the back. But again, it's a mix-and-mingle thing, mostly chamber people, yeah, yeah.
I mean, left bridge and a north and docks.
Okay, no, and I'm, I don't know where I'll be. Well, I know where I'll be, but I, yeah. Too far away to attend.
I will have to see if I can get the afternoon off.
It's just a lunch, like an hour and a half.
My, I can't get hours off, I have to take either a morning or an afternoon, but that's fine, Phyllis and I can go drinking afterwards.
No, ma'am, I will have to come back.
Still on.
Shannon has been very clear on that.
You've had to talk to her about her drinking.
There are, be, because it's a working day, like, I, it is usually over by about one-thirty, it's, it's, it's a lunch. Okay, anything else? All in favor, opposed, that's carried, and Jim's moving adjournment?
Yep.
Jim likes to move adjournment.
Any questions or concerns about that? All in favor, opposed, that's carried.